The City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, May 17, 2023, to order. A lot of things going on in the world, so we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is you want to think about. Thank you. If you'd please all join Alderwoman Lee in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobgen.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Ten.
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. If you would please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. You'll have five minutes. We'd ask you to give your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are. Let's see. When addressing the council, please address us as a body and not as any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, anything for tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. We have one public hearing under Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Credit Island Nature Playground Installation Project, CIP 64103. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. We have two presentations and a recognition. Well, two presentation, one is a recognition. First is volunteer recognition, and it's concerning Mr. Ashton, who everybody knows, but I'll read a little bit, and then I'll ask Mr. Ashton to join me at the podium. So, Mr. Bill Ashton, professional life, very highly respected civil engineer with decades of experience in structural design, responsible for 2,600-foot Milwaukee Railroad Bridge over the Iowa-Sailor-Voar Reservoir, earning him Quad City Engineer of the Year in 1970. He also oversaw engineering of the Iowa River Bridge on U.S. Highway 21 near Steamboat Rock, Iowa, one of the first sites chosen in the U.S. to use steel. Superstructure spans with welded plate grider beams. His work has extended to lock-in dams, rivers, harbors throughout the United States, worked as an engineer for the Rock Island Army Corps of Engineers, and most recently as president of Ashton Engineering. Mr. Ashton is a heart for service and love for the community. In addition to his long-term service on the Riverfront Improvement Commission, also volunteered his time with Junior Achievement, the Commission on Scott County Veterans Affairs, friend of Van Devere Park, and past president of the Rotary Club, where he used his engineering background to design rainwater capture systems in Guatemala. Record of community service goes on and on. Mr. Ashton brought decades of knowledge, skill, and passion to the Riverfront Improvement Commission, always prepared and ready to provide historical context and technical expertise, and he rarely missed a meeting. We all appreciate that. Mr. Ashton played an instrumental role in shaping our riverfront over the past two decades, whether it be the establishment and development of Ridge Heritage Park, advocacy for veteran Mohawk Parkers, or participation on the working group that negotiated with our railroad friends to restore riverfront access after the railroad tracks were raised. Been at the table for almost every basic riverfront discussion for the last 20 years. We'd like to honor Mr. Ashton for his two decades of service to the Davenport Riverfront Improvement Commission, and thanking for making Davenport a great place to live, work, and play, and I'd be honored, Mr. Ashton, if you'd meet me at the podium.
Okay, so we have a certificate, and I'll read it to everyone. Certificate of appreciation for Bill Ashton in recognition of your steadfast commitment to the city of Davenport by providing nearly two decades of dedicated service as a Riverfront Improvement Commission member. So it's with great honor on behalf of the council, myself, and the 102,000 citizens of Davenport, thank you very much for your service, and we appreciate everything you do.
Please, we'd love to -- council would love to hear from you.
Just so you know, I started with a small envelope. I folded it in two, and I only wrote on half of it. I was really fortunate when I came to Levy Commission. I'd worked 18 years for the Corps of Engineers. Maybe that's good, maybe that's bad. But I'd worked on flood protection, Dubuque, Clinton, Bettendorf, Rock Island, and Waterloo. So I'd been through all the problems of approvals by the DNR and the Corps of Engineers. I had another really benefit to come and -- I was a flood technical engineer for the Corps between everything from Fairport Fish Hatchery to Leclerc. Myself and Jared Morris went out every night, worked all night keeping track of it, every flood from 1967 to 1978. So I got to know just about every manhole. I was talked into coming to the Levy Commission by Charlie Heston and Mayor Glove. And the first thing I did after I got on the commission was I went to Iowa City and written the law that was made allow us to have a Levy Commission, and that really helped me understand some of the problems that you all have in dealing with the river. I told Kelly Groves, the chairman of the Levy Commission, that I was not leaving. She needed help, called me, and I'd come and help her. But the one thing, the last thing I'd like to say is that it's the Levy Improvement Commission and the things that Dee's sitting back here, that you should be working on the improvement of the riverfront all the way down to Utah Street, and there's plenty to be done. So that's all. I thank you very much for recognizing what I did. Thank you, Ranger.
Okay, next, we have some Davenport Police Department recognitions and swearing in. So Chief, if you would do your thing, and I'll meet you at the podium at the appropriate
Thank you, Mayor. Elected officials, Jeff Bladel, your chief of police. Today, our department is very excited, very excited that we get an opportunity to swear in three new officers. But in addition to the officers that we get to introduce you guys here in just a sec, we get to welcome three new families into our city. You know, to the officers, we always talk about the quality of our police department, the innovation of our police department, our concentration on training, you know, things that we do to keep officers safe and keep them here and professional. But to the families, we have to look at the support that we get from our communities, from our elected officials, from our citizens, that we have a really fantastic community with a lot of great things going on. So to our officers, we welcome you, as well as the families. Welcome to Davenport. So we'll start off with the first officer is Officer Brandon Connell. So Officer Brandon Connell was born and raised in Clinton, Iowa. He attended Prince of Peace Catholic School throughout his K through 12 years. Brandon completed his undergraduate studies in music at St. Ambrose University in 2006 and completed a master's degree in music at the University of Nevada-Reno in 2015. He previously worked for Air Control Incorporated in Clinton, Iowa, as a graduate teaching assistant at the University of Nevada-Reno and the University of Southern Mississippi, and spent the last six years as a professor of music at Mount Mary University in Yakatain, South Dakota. In Brandon's free time, he enjoys spending time with family and friends, singing and playing piano and guitar. His father will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Brandon J. Connell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Next, we have Police Officer Ethan Bach. Ethan Bach was born in San Diego, California, and raised in Roscoe, Illinois. He graduated from Hanagai High School in 2018, where he played football. Ethan earned his bachelor's degree in criminology, law, and justice from the University of Illinois at Chicago in 2022. After graduation, Ethan moved to the Quad Cities, where he works as a legal assistant and advocate for individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities. Ethan has a small dog, Kona, and loves the Minnesota Vikings. In his free time, he enjoys weightlifting, hiking, and playing chess. His girlfriend will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Ethan Bach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the.
Duties of a police officer.
Duties of a police officer.
For the city of Davenport.
For the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer.
Jamie Bennett grew up in Galena, Illinois, where he graduated from Galena High School, where he played football. He attended Hawkeye Community College, where he received his associate degree in criminal justice in 2020, before transferring to the University of Northern Iowa, where he graduated with his bachelor's degree in criminology in 2022. He enjoys spending time in the criminology club in college. His girlfriend will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Jamie Bennett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Davenport.
For the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Again, I can't express the excitement we have for being able to add additional offers to the ranks. We still are continually hiring. These officers are four weeks out of the academy. This weekend, they get to start our field training program on the different shifts. So again, we can't do without your support. We can't do without the support of our city administration, as well as the support from our community. So thank you, guys, for everything. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Great day. All right. Next is Petitions and Communications and Councilmembers and Mayor. I just wanted to say quickly again that we'll pause and give a moment for folks to exit to the stage, whatever, right or left, because I know they were excited to stay, but, you Okay, we'll continue on. So if there's other conversations, if they can be had out in the hallway. All right, petition and communication. I just want to take a moment again to thank Public Works and all the folks that both set up the HESCOs, did the flood watch, and are cleaning up and taking down. Just know that we thank you for all the work, and I appreciate, and we appreciate what you do. So I see Alderman Gripp.
Well, Bill just snuck out of here, so unfortunately, what I wanted to say was really directed towards Mr. Ashton and his decades of service to the Riverfront Improvement Commission. So I've served as the liaison on the Riverfront Improvement Commission for the past seven years, and I've learned a lot from Bill Ashton. Nobody knows more about the Davenport Riverfront than him and his love for Davenport as a parent, and literally his community service. You could have gone on and on for pages and pages. The guy is just absolutely committed to giving back to the community, and I just wanted to make sure that he was recognized for two decades, showing up every month, hardly ever missing a meeting, for 19 years, never receiving anything for it except for the knowledge that he was trying to improve our riverfront, and I think that is absolutely admirable. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Mine was also, one of them was directed to Mr. Ashton, but a sweet story. When I was first starting my business, my environmental consulting business, I called Bill and said, can I come in and ask for some advice? I hadn't started yet, and I didn't know how to actually start a business. And he said, sure, come on in, and we talked a little bit. He gave me some really good advice. He sent me over to the woman who kept his books, and I believe her name was Lucy, and this was over 30 years ago. And she pulls out a ledger, a paper ledger, and back then, that's how they kept their literal books there. And she showed me how she had it all set up, but I'm forever grateful to Mr. Ashton for that. And the other thing I wanted to say about the Davenport Police Department that always impresses me is that report after report, you know, they'll be chasing somebody, and they'll get out of the car and start to run, and they're caught. You know, the Davenport Police Department, they chase them, and they catch them a lot of the time, and that is pretty impressive to me, that they're catching people on foot, probably, who are a lot younger than some of the policemen that are running after them. So that was always impressive. And then I have a question for staff, and I don't know who to ask, so I'm just going to throw it out there. We had a couple of rallies here in town, one for Mr. DeSantis and one for Mr. Trump, and I wandered down to the one for Mr. Trump. And I'm just wondering if we have gotten paid for the use of the Adler and paid for the use of the Davenport Police, because we also had road closures on that, and I don't believe those came before council. And we also had vendors set up in the street on Third. So I was just wondering how that whole system is working since we're going to have a lot more of that coming in.
If it's okay, Alderwoman Lee, we would do a memo and get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. All right, anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one on community development this evening is a resolution of support for the submission of a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for the proposed Fifth Street Gold District project at Fifth and Harrison Streets and approving an urban revitalization tax exemption application for the same. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution of support for the submission of a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for the proposed 1029 Mound Street project and approving an urban revitalization tax exemption application for the same. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on that item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, I'll just mention that we see these routinely. Essentially, we make a recommendation, they go to the state of Iowa, and then the state of Iowa decides whether they'll receive those tax credits or not. So we typically see a few rounds of these throughout the year, and some of them get funded and some of them don't. All right, moving on to item number three, a resolution approving case F-22-14 being the request of Elmore Avenue LLC for a final plat of Windsor Meadows Commercial Park 3rd Edition, a three-lot subdivision on 9.04 acres located at 3860 Elmore Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? All right, seeing no one, this item moves on. Item number four is a resolution approving case F-23-03 being the request of Dan Dolan Homes LLC for a final plat of Birchwood Grove 2nd Edition, a 42-lot subdivision on 7.4 acres near the terminus of Lakeview Parkway and Ravenwood Lane. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Jobgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was an item that, when it came through for rezoning, I was never really enamored with the project and specifically the density of the residential component. I'm still not super enamored. You know, obviously, there's nothing here where, you know, I'm going to object to the plat. Obviously, we'll vote to approve. I think staff has kind of been massaging this along as it goes, little things that come up, you know, and being responsive to the residents. And then I just asked the developer that, as continue to finish the build outs, make this an example of how you've done your best work and been a great neighbor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Jobgen. Seeing no one else, Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda?
Yes, thank you very much. I move that items one, two, three, and four be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Are there any opposed? All right, that concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next series is public safety. Alderman Jobgen and Alderwoman Dickman discuss. Alderman Jobgen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closure requests for the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Hope of the Brick House Block Parties, 1431 Ripley Street, 4:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. every Friday beginning June 9, 2023, and ending August 21, 2023. Closure, Ripley Street between West 14th and West 15th Streets. Next, Evelyn Reed Graduation Party, 2818 Grand Avenue, 1 p.m. to 6 p.m. Saturday, June 10, 2023. Closure, North-South Alley from East Garfield Street to East 29th Street between Jefferson and Grand Avenues. Next, the Friends of MLK, Quad City Juneteenth Festival, 318 East 7th Street, 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. Saturday, June 17, 2023. Closures, Pershing Avenue from East 7th Street to East 8th Street. Next, Ken Hopper Quad City Air Show, Davenport Municipal Airport, 9230 North Harrison Street, 2:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Wednesday, June 21, 2023, for practice. 10:30 a.m., 12 p.m., and 3 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Thursday, June 22, 2023, for practice. 10:30 a.m., 12 p.m., and 1:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Friday, June 23, 2023, for practice. And 12 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Saturday, June 24, 2023, and Sunday, June 25, 2023, for the air show. Closures, Sloperton Road from east of the Sterilite Entrance to North Harrison Street, North Division Street from the Roundabout at Amazon to Sloperton Road. And then last, Village of East Davenport Business Association, Village Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, 2 p.m. to 6 p.m. Saturday, August 12, 2023, or 2 p.m. to 6 p.m. Saturday, August 19, 2023, for the rain date. Closures are East 11th Street between Mound Street and Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street north to just south of the alley. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving noise variance requests for the listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Humility Homes and Services Welcome Home Party, 519 Fillmore Street, 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. Saturday, June 10, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, the Friends of MLK, Quad City Juneteenth Festival, 318 East 7th Street, 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Saturday, June 17, 2023. Outdoor music performances over 50 dB. And last, Hydrocephalus Association, Eastern Iowa, Walk to End Hydrocephalus, Architectural Sculpture Park, Lindsay Park, 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. Sunday, August 27, 2023. Outdoor music, DJ, over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. Item number three is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those items under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location, transfer, et cetera. Flavor of India, 2660 East 53rd Street, new license, license type, Class C liquor, on premises. Next, Tantra, 589 East 53rd Street, license type, Class C liquor, on premises. Then we have those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which you do not read, but they are there for review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on, and I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed onto the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobgen and Alderwoman Dickman. The next series is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is the first consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.34 entitled Department of Public Works in Section 2.30.080 entitled City Administrator Additional Duties of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, to state again the existing ability to align operational areas with organizational resources as needed. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on.
I have a question.
Alderman Kelly.
I'm sorry. Sorry for my absence. I just wanted to know a little more about the structural change, and is this something that is typically, that goes through council, and you guys can get back to me on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution adopting a policy establishing criteria and procedures for the installation of traffic calming measures within the city of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just want to thank staff, Traffic Engineering Department for coming up with this policy, and look forward to continuing to roll this out, because again, we had a nice, successful pilot project over there, abutting the Sixth and the Seventh Wards, and hopefully we can do so to alleviate one of the biggest nuisances for those residents in our fine neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of road salt for the 2023-2024 winter season to Compost Minerals America Incorporated of Overland Park, Kansas, in the amount of $498,345. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the Mound Street, East Locust Street to Elm Street resurfacing project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $375,657.40. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a motion awarding a contract for the City Hall Historic Clock Restoration Project to the Tower Clock Company of South Charleston, Ohio, in the amount of $49,800. And before I ask for any comments from public, and I got Brian, who's going to put up a few pictures to show our colleagues what we're planning on doing here, I know some of my colleagues have had the opportunity to go up and actually look at what's up there, but what we have up there in the clock tower is an 1893 Howard Clock. It's one of the finest clocks ever made, and we have it sitting here, but the only problem is it only tells the correct time twice a day. So we have reached out to this gentleman from this company, and he's come and looked at it, and he's going to, we're going to restore this, we're looking to restore this clock and the bell, and there's a lot of different mechanicals to this. It's really quite impressive. They don't make things like this anymore, and, you know, it's pretty historic, but once we're done, it's going to go all back to original like you see there in the pictures, and it's going to be pretty neat, and we also will be getting the bell to ring. There's a bell that's in that clock tower that was donated to the city of Davenport from the old Rockingham Hose Company. It was a volunteer fire department, they went to spunk, and they give the city the bell, and they build all this city hall around all this. So, you know, this is a pretty historic project, and, you know, there's not too many folks that fix these things anymore, and if we don't do it now, might not get the chance again. So it's a neat project. I think it'll show a lot of pride for downtown. We intend on lighting up the dial faces and get the clock work, the bell work, and take it back to its historic, original condition. So with that now open, anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Gripp.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize you, Alderman Dunn, for the work that you've done on this. This is very cool, and I'm excited about it. I think you're right, when you come down to City Hall and you see a broken clock, I think that says something, right? And if you see a clock that works, I think that says something, too. And another thing is, I love to visit cities and downtowns and older neighborhoods where the church bells ring and the city bell rings, and I think those noises also create a sense of community, and so I really appreciate you researching this and appreciating it, and I'm looking forward to seeing a working clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, but the real credit has to go to staff and actually the mayor, because he's the one that inspired me to put this project together, and I appreciate that. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Well, there you go. I think we're echoing. I just also wanted to say thank you for your work. I know that, I know Steph has done great work. I know the mayor's, you know, been an encouragement, but you have really been, done the young man's task, and I had a chance early on to do a little research when you were starting this, and so I know how long you've been working on it, and I really appreciate it. It's, you know, these are unique things that, you know, there's towns you go to and they aren't there, they're long gone, and there's nothing in their tower, so thanks for taking this on, and thanks for your passion, always your passion for the city. So thank you for, it's a joy to work with you. Thank you.
Anyone else? See?
Me, if I can jump in there.
Alderman Kelly.
I don't want to reiterate what everybody else is saying. I'm excited to hear and see the clock as well, so I would like to thank you and the staff for all your due diligence and hard work that you guys are putting forth with this effort. So I look forward to seeing this in operation as well.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Mayor Mattson.
I agree with everyone. I just want to say thank you for your work. It was wonderful, the discussions we had, which were interesting, but you took it on to be full credit, and it's getting done, and this will be really nice, so I appreciate you doing this.
That's how government works, plenty of conversations. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a motion awarding a contract for the 2023 Spring Demolitions to Johnson Hauling and Escavating LLC of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $84,100. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? You'll have to raise your hands, because my thing went dead there. Item number seven is a motion approving the purchase of gas monitors for the Water Pollution Control Plant from Allied Systems Incorporated of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $59,431.56. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, number eight is a motion approving the purchase of a John Deere 331G compact track loader from Martin Equipment of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $85,607.40 using Sourcewell Contract Number 011723. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I'd be glad to. I would like to place, move to place all items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, and that concludes Public Works for this evening. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are six items on finance this evening. Item number one, third consideration ordinance amending Chapter 13.16 entitled wastewater facilities of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by amending subsection 13.16.106D to change the maximum amount billed for quarterly residential customers from 50 centrum cubic feet to 35 centrum cubic feet. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Council? Alderman Jobchin.
I just want to give you kudos for being able to eloquently say centrum cubic feet. Googled moments prior. Thank you.
Item number two is a resolution approving the plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Credit Island Nature Playground Installation Project, CIP 64103. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Council? Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. I know this project's been in the works for quite some time. It's a really neat project for the Credit Island, and I would just like to have staff come up and speak to us about how we designed this to be flood resilient.
Mayor and council, Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director. Unfortunately, he left, but I was going to give kudos to Bill Ashton on this one as well, because part of his initial comments during our concept review with Riverfront Improvement really spurred a lot of the conversation on how to make this flood resilient. We took those comments to heart, primarily looking at elevating the majority of the play pieces above the flood level. Secondly, the way this nature playground is spaced and the individual components, the majority of them are removable, so during a flood event, we can remove and store them and then reinstall, so they're not exposed to those elements. So those are two of the primary ways we have made this project more flood resilient.
Perfect. Can't wait to see it completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else from council, item number two will move on. Item number three is a resolution awarding a one-year contract with the option of two one-year extensions for Crossing Guard Services to Everything Parking, Inc., doing business as Cross Safe of Charlotte, North Carolina. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Council? Item number three will move on. Item number four is a resolution ratifying the emergency purchase of 200 HESCO flood barriers from HESCO Bastion, Inc. of North Charleston, South Carolina, in the amount of $102,020. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? Council? Number four will move on. Item number five, resolution awarding a contract for the Police Department Parking Ramp Secure Entrance Project to Rain or Door of the Quad Cities of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of Would anyone from the public like to address item number five? Council? That'll move on, and finally, item number six is a motion directing completion of various parks projects in the fiscal year 2024 park development program in the amount not to exceed $350,000. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address item number six? From the council, Alderwoman Lee, please.
Thank you. Lot of good projects. Thank you, Chad. Just a quick question on status of a couple of projects?
Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director, back again.
Any update on the bike racks for parks around the city?
Yeah, so they are complete, and they will be installed here in the next several weeks.
Oh, yes. Excellent. And I know we ran into cost overruns in the bidding for Waylon Park Walking. Do we have any?
Yeah, so the plan there is to revise the plans a little bit and bid later this fall in more favorable bid conditions, and so hopefully we'll get a better response and be able to complete that project in the future.
And thank you for caring about, you know, making sure that the price is a good price.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Seeing no one else, item number six moves on. Below on our agenda, we have our purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. Those aren't read individually, but they are listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our finance agenda?
Yes, I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Next area is, are there any ordinances, resolutions, motions? There are none for tonight. Next area, is there any public with business other than what was on the agenda? Seeing none, any report? Okay, there's a public? Please come. Name, order, address, if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are. You'll have five minutes, and thank you.
Dave Kenny, and Rick Dunn's Ward. I'm a little armchair quarterbacking here, because I know the decision's already made to allow the car wash to go into five points, and I know you've discussed it a lot, and I'm sure you've done your due diligence on a lot of this, so I didn't know about this until it was in the paper, so I would have come sooner, but I just recently found out about it. We've got five car washes west of Brady Street right now. I don't know why we need another one, but look at Vettendorf, they're building them all over the place, so I guess people think they can make money off of them. And why would the city want to lose some tax money if somebody's going to invest a few million dollars? I think the city has incentive, and if there's no reason not to build it, if they want to build it and they think they can make money, why would you vote against it? I understand that. But when somebody comes here from out of state, talks to a realtor, realtor has somebody that really wants to sell, and they see the traffic volume, like, well, this is going to be a great place to put a car wash, and then they come to the city, the city looked at it, and my thing, the people I've talked to are not really supportive of this, the people I've talked to. I haven't talked to a lot of people, just from a safety standpoint. Five points is a cluster to get around on. I've almost been hit before going to Walgreens and crossing Harrison. So, you know, it's just a dangerous intersection. It was in the paper, it's like third or second or third in the city, so why would you put a car wash there? It just, common sense would tell you, the city should have vetted this and said, hey, we'll take your investment, but look here, we've got a site over here, if you go out on West Kimberly, there's sites there for sale, like Fairmont and Kimberly, if you go out further in Locust, and supposedly, this, a lot of these are subscriptions, so they don't mind driving a little further. I mean, over half of them are supposed to be subscription services, and these out-of-state companies come in here and, I won't say exaggerate, but I can't understand how it would take 100 employees to run a car wash. I have some experience with that, and car washes that I am familiar with, they run it on five employees. So you've got to take what some of these companies say with a grain of salt and not believe everything they say, and, you know, maybe you need to see some numbers from what they say, what they're saying they're going to bring to the community. So you've got to vet them, and I'm, it's already done, and I hate armchair quarterbacking here, so part of the reason I'm here is that you've already decided and allowed this here, so the right in and right out is really the only way to go for this, and what I, the main reason I'm here is that if in the future, they say, hey, we're losing 30% of our business because people are having trouble getting into our car wash, now, the way I understand this, they have to go right in and right out, and my thing is, this should never be changed. They should understand this is the way it is, and I don't agree with some aldermen who say, just let them go turn left to come in, and then we'll see how it goes. No, that's, you go by traffic engineer recommendations from the city staff, and this is what they said, right in and right out is the best way to do it. And if they stick with that, this may not be an issue at all, because Walgreens is like that, you can't turn left coming out of Walgreens there. So I'm just saying, I hope that the council will stick with that decision, because you don't want an accident, even a rear end can change somebody's life for the rest of their life, and, you know, I don't know what the liability is for the city, because if the council goes against what the city recommends, there's some lawsuits involved here if somebody gets really hurt or killed there. So, I don't know, that's my two cents on it, and I just hope they stick with the right in and right out, and hopefully that'll be a safe way to put this car wash in here. But in the future, I wish they'd really look at the traffic flow for some of these, and we've got many other sites that could be developed in, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Ms. Spiegel, anything? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We're adjourned. Have a wonderful weekend.